We're in the City of Latha Village Council Meeting. Um, Madam Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Brock. Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember Stollings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, can someone make a motion, please, to excuse Councilman Brock?
So move second.
The motion is second of all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. He has been excused. Now we're gonna do the approval of the agenda. Either it needs to be changed.
Didn't we have a change to it? Didn't we have a added something with the CBD?
No, that's gonna be something that goes underneath the action items.
Can I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Nope, just approval of the agenda. You have to change it to approval of the agenda.
No.
I'm sorry?
You get approval of the agenda.
Approval of the agenda. I make an emotion that we have an approval of the agenda.
Second.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I do have a question. Make sure that I'm right about what Mayor Pro Tim said about the...
The block grant.
Yeah.
This one?
The form you just gave us, that is falling under the action item. So there's nothing that needs to change.
Right. Nothing's to change.
Okay. Any other discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Agenda has been approved. Next, we will do the approval of the consent agenda, which would include the approval of the minutes from October 29th study session, approval of the minutes October 29th council meeting, approval of the minutes November 1st study session, approval of the minutes for November 5th study session.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The consent agenda is approved. Now we will consider the approval of dispersments from the period of... I took the slashes out of it some moment. This is digital. This looks like code. Okay. From October 1st, 2018 to October 15th, 2018, $48,374.80. First one.
I'll make a motion for the period of October 1st, October 15th, 2018, for $48,374.80 to approve.
Second.
My second. It's been moved in second. Do you have any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That was approved. Second period is October 13th through October 31st, 2018,
I make a motion that there's approval of dispersments for the period of 10/13/2018 to 10/30/2018, for $557,882.78.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That was approved also. Next, we'll consider the acceptance of the departmental reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the department reports.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any questions or any discussion?
Yeah. Uh, page 20. I was just curious, the, um, there was a purchase for $7,500 for ADA compliant picnic tables, and then it was under the CDBG expenditures? Isn't this, I thought the CD... The CDBG was only for senior activities for last year, or am I mistaken?
It was ADA approved. Then they covered the cost for the picnic tables.
Okay. And how many picnic tables did we get?
I believe it was eight.
Okay.
I think so.
Is that for the pavilion?
The intention is to put them mostly in the pavilion and the pool, um, place the ones that are currently in the pavilion and the other parks.
Right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a question on the training on 21. It's, um, just confused on what it's for. Card member service, Exxon Enterprise.
Where are you at? Is this under the public safety?
Page 21.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm under, yeah, I'm page 21.
About halfway down.
What's under public safety? I guess it's training, but it has office supplies. 65th anniversary. So I just...
I'd have to look that up and get back to you.
Okay, and, um...
I'd have to get back to you. Looking at it, it would appear that it would either be Publics, the Police Department, or DPS, but I'd have to confirm.
Okay. And the one following it as well, the Exxon Enterprise.
Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The department reports are accepted. Now it's time that we have public comment. Anything that's not on the agenda, we ask you to step to the mic. Do they have to give their address again? Didn't we just go there?
No, they don't have to be a resident, but they should still give their address.
Do they have to acknowledge their address, Scott?
Uh, you can request it.
Do we want to?
Why not?
No.
If you don't, no. So you can step to the mic. You don't have to worry about giving your address.
Mayor and Council, my name is Nancy Quarles. I'm the Oakland County Commissioner for Latha Village. And I come tonight with, um, an opportunity that the county is offering. And I want to make sure the City of Latha Village is well aware of it. As you probably know, small business Saturday is November 24th. And any person that comes in, I'll likely leave a package of these cards here that shops in Oakland County, or one of Oakland County's small businesses. There is a card and a instruction on registering your receipt. And there's gonna be a drawing for those that register. And the first prize is a $5,000 card to do further shopping. The $2,000 is the second prize at the Bank of Ann Arbor, which is one of the newer banks that have moved into Oakland County. And then there's a third prize of $500. So I want to encourage all the citizens in Latha Village to participate and have an opportunity to do further shopping and really support the small business community within Oakland County. As most of you probably know, Oakland County is taking an opportunity to really, really push our small businesses, because that is where most of the growth is taking place in this county. So if it's okay with you, if I can leave these. And hopefully, we get the message out to the citizens. There have been email blasts from the county, but I decided to start going, pardon me, to start visiting all my cities and make sure that they are well aware of it. Who would like to move me to the other one?
Do you have a flyer? Is, are all those flyers?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay. I thought those were...
Give them to...
To that, or to Cheryl. Doctor, excuse me. Is there anyone else that would like to do public comment? Okay. So now we need to do the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant.
This evening, which we've published in the paper, we have a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant funds. We do this on a yearly basis. And tonight will be the funds for 2019. So they asked that during the public hearing comment time, that it's only for the public, and then after the public make their comments, and then City Council can make theirs as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone in the public have anything to say about the community? Hang on, we need to hold the whole word. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. Okay. Well, when the public hearing is now closed, we'll move into our action items. First action item is a motion to adopt a resolution for the use of the 2019 Community Development Block Grants. Otherwise, don't. It's a CDBG.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution for the use of the 2019 CDBG funds.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I might just add that the allotted amount for 2019 is $7,137. And that's primarily to use towards senior programs, including nutrition, education, and exercise.
Thank you.
And picnic tables. And picnic tables.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It has been approved. Now we'll consider the approval of the first reading... Who's the first? Yeah, this is the first, sorry. First reading and ordinance to amend Appendix A Franchises, amending Article 1, Consumer Power Company in its entirety.
I can speak on this one if you'd like. So this is a, uh, our currently, Consumer Powers provide... Consumer Energy provides power to the residents of Latha Village under an existing franchise agreement, which is set to expire. It was a 30-year agreement that was proposed, or passed in 20, or, I'm sorry, 1988. So this replaces that franchise agreement, which will allow them to continue providing services to the residents of Latha Village.
And if we don't agree on it, it's still gonna happen anyway, right?
Uh, well, they will, they have, they can't provide the services without a franchise agreement in place. So if you didn't agree on this, there would be an interruption in service.
So...
That's sad. So again, you have to really have no choice to approve it. Okay.
It's a non, it's a, and I will say, it's a non-exclusive franchise. So there is one other, and I don't have it in front of me, but there is one other company that has a franchise agreement with the city to provide gas service. But it is a non-exclusive, so Consumers is not the only entity that's capable of providing that service. But each entity that desires to provide the services are required to have, um, have a franchise agreement in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could add, the current franchise expires April 2019, and they wanted to have a few months' lead time in order to get everything in order.
Okay. Thank you.
So I make a motion to approve first reading of an ordinance to amend Appendix A.
Now, second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next up is going to be, and I know I'm gonna screw this name up again.
Munetrix.
Munetrix Contract. The consideration of approving the Munetrix Contract.
Mayor and Council, if you recall from the study session, we had a presentation from the representatives from Munetrix, which is a platform for municipal metrics, data analytic platform that measures everything relative to local government's fiscal and operational performance. They have a partnership with Simcock, and they are providing this platform to us for a cost of $4,059.45, plus a one-time setup fee of $608.92. And then the state treasury is offering a reimbursement grant for 50, up to 50% of that cost.
Which would make the cost, um...
Just over $2,000.
Really?
Yeah.
Is this the company that came in and gave us a demonstration a couple months, a few months ago? It is?
No. Couple weeks ago. Not, not, not...
Recently.
I think you're thinking of the C Click Fix.
Yes.
This was not, this was a...
This is totally...
Last week, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
We have the VP here in the room, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, I'm, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Katrina Powell. I'm the Vice President of Municipal Services. And yes, we were here. We gave a presentation a couple of weeks ago. We do provide a data analytical platform that measures everything, as you said, Cheryl. Cheryl also had the pleasure of working with the system in her previous position in another community. And she used it. Our employees loved working with her. And we've already started working with Pam, getting your data installed so that we can do your CVTRS, which is your revenue sharing from the state. It's a report that has to be submitted before December 1st. So if you all approve this tonight, we will go ahead and help your staff get that done, as well as put in for the reimbursement of up to 50, actually is 50% of the cost.
What have the cost increases been year to year? Like, for now, it's $4,059. What percentage has things increased from year to year?
Interestingly enough, previously, the cost has not gone up since 2012. So we've been able to keep the cost pretty, pretty stable across the board as the years have gone on, because we've been able to increase our customer base. And we are not only operating in Michigan, but we're in Florida, New York, and now Texas, so...
So it's safe to say that we're stable for another six years?
Um, no, sir. I cannot commit to that. Nice try.
So you say it's a data analytical platform. It measures everything relative to local government.
Um, finances, crash data, population, increase... It shows you basically what's happening financially for your community. If you're, if you're stable, if you're in need of some sort of assistance. We've also just now started with the PA 202, which is a pension in OPEB. We're now heading that up. That's a huge platform that our database handles. And you can basically search for anything that's, you know, public data, not just in the state of Michigan, but nationwide. We have data for every community, city, county, state, village, town, for the entire country. So you're able to look at all that data as a customer, Munetrix. So in your free time this winter, when you're like stranded at home in the snow, feel free to just peruse everybody's community. And we also have their websites on there. We have their populations. We have all of their finance information. And you can just, you know, pick and choose around the country what you want to compare yourself to.
And I know you've been, went through this, but isn't it, doesn't Simcock have this information?
They, they have a portion of this information. Yes, ma'am. They do. But in order for the, the city administration or finance to do any kind of reporting, to provide you any, any, any in-depth information that they want to get, they're unable to get that from the Simcock information.
Okay. So you help bridge...
They just provide the...
You help bridge what we have with the data analytic... Okay, I got it.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
And it's not, it does not provide that service, that C Click service that we had. Okay, that's what I wanted to separate. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just so everyone knows, whoever is using it, you can pull charts on the fly as well, right?
Correct. Yes.
So whatever you're scrolling through, you can actually pull up a chart and compare it to another city.
Correct. And it's not just for you. It's for the public as well.
Right.
And plus, you know, the state requires every community to provide a financial dashboard. And so this is a really neat dashboard that you don't have to maintain. It's automatically maintained every year. When the city submits their F-65 report, which is your audited financials, that is information that is uploaded into our system, and your dashboard is automatically updated. So none of your staff has to sit down and actually go through that and put in those numbers, because that's so tenuous. So it's automatically done for you.
Just a quick question. So can you pull, like, millage information out of this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's a perfect example, because, you know, we had a school millage that came up earlier this year, 2018, I think in 2018. And so most of the residents actually had to search around to find the data, and they finally did collect it. And then they, you know, dispersed it toward, you know, through the community, as opposed to having a database where you can just put the information in and compare your city with Hazel Park or wherever, so...
And that information is already in there.
Yes.
So you're able to look at everyone's millages. There's actually a report that you can pull up for everyone's millage and see, you know, what they're charging. And a lot of the, a lot of our customers use that data when they want to go out for a millage to justify, you know, let's, the community A, we're of the same population. We have the same demographics. We've got the same information. We're providing the same services. But yet, we're only charging this much for the service.
Right. And you might remember, you can create your own benchmarks.
Yes, you can.
Benchmark against whomever you want.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Just one last question. Can you tell us who the other cities are that are around us that are using this date, this?
Um, we have 300 communities that are using it, so, um...
Berkeley?
All over. Yeah, Berkeley.
Royal Oak?
Royal Oak is not.
Okay.
But you know, they're special. And...
You're on camera.
They're special.
Beverly Hills or Birmingham?
Uh, Birmingham is not. Ferndale is. And you can still pull their data.
Right.
Even though they're not customers, you still have access to that data. Because you are a customer, you're able to see all of that data. They are unable to see your data. And they're unable to create peer groups of your information. But you can use their information to do peer groups.
Oh, that's great. Yeah.
It is.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Another level.
Well, and it's, it's easier for your staff to pull the data too, because a lot of times, we, back in the old days, we used to sit down and call all the cities around us. We would have the directory from, from the MML, and we would sit there and call all of the cities and go through and see who has the same population that we have, and call them and say, "Hey, can you send me this information?" It's such a bother. But now, there's a one-stop shop where you can get all that data in one click.
Well, we have had run into that issue, you know, a few times, waiting for information.
Oh, I'm sure we all have. So, yeah.
So I think it's...
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Who would like to make the motion?
Make a motion to approve Munetrix subscription agreement for $4,059.45, plus a one-time setup of $608.92, and authorize the city administrator to sign related documents and apply for the 50% grant with the Michigan Treasury.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Yep.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes. One last discussion. So are there any software updates annually or bi-quarterly or quick, just?
Uh, no, sir. It's all out in the cloud. So it's automatically updated. We update it every other day or so.
Okay.
It is backed up on the West Coast, as well as the East Coast and in the Midwest. So your data is safe, and it's, it's easy to access. You just need to have a computer and the internet.
Okay.
So how long did, how long did it say that we were okay? Did I hear six years? So, uh, this is not a license or nothing like that.
I heard six years.
Okay, you can go back. You can go back. I'm just kidding.
It's a one-year license, but nice try.
We were working together. Yeah.
Tag teaming up here tonight.
I'm sure.
Um, it is a one-year license, but it's also renewable every year, unless the city decides they no longer want us, and we just need a 30-day notice.
Okay. Sounds good. I was just kidding.
And there's really no way that anyone could, like, manipulate our data to say somebody went to the computer and...
No, ma'am. All of the data that is input initially is from the X F-65. We get a download from the state of Michigan every year once everyone's audits are complete. So we actually, you know, download that directly from the state. The city does have access to put in their information so that if you're doing some forecasting, or you're doing budgeting, or that sort of thing, you're able to manipulate those numbers. But you're not able to manipulate the numbers that came from your financial audit.
Okay.
So how long have you been doing this?
How long have I been doing this?
Yeah. How old is this company?
Um, it was created in 2010.
Okay. And they haven't had any problems with...
No, ma'am.
Stealing data or anything?
Oh, no, ma'am. No.
Okay. All right.
It's all public data. We're just a, we're just a data aggregator.
Okay.
But sometimes you don't want to let people know if you're, if you're doing forecasting, or budgeting, or something like that. Sometimes you don't want to let the public know that until you're done with it, because you are messing around in there to see if I, if I decide to cut this, how will it impact the budget? If, if, we want to forecast our fund balance to be 35% instead of, you know, 10%, how does that impact us? I know that you guys are also working on a fund balance policy. So we'll be able to put that data in there, and you'll have like a benchmark to work off of. Right now, you're extremely financially secure. It looks very good. And we were actually commenting on that in our office.
Please say that again.
Well, thank you.
Yes, you look very, very good financially.
You have 300 communities to compare it to, so thank you.
Actually, we have 1,700 communities.
1,700 communities. That's very good.
Yeah, so you guys are doing very well.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Next is going to be the approval of closing City Hall on Thursday, December 20th, from 12:30 PM to 4:30 PM.
Why?
For employee potluck holiday celebration for four hours.
Council potluck?
Yeah, like, well, let her explain.
Okay. Well, we've worked so hard all year long, and it was an opportunity for our staff to celebrate the holidays. So we were having a potluck lunch on December 20th, which is a Thursday, starting at 12:30, and anticipating that they would like to also participate in supporting local businesses after lunch, so to allow them to have the afternoon off, essentially. And you're invited to come to the potluck.
That's a real...
Wow.
Okay, now we can move forward. Okay, so...
You're like, oh, this was a song.
Yes. Since we're invited, I'll make a motion.
It's important.
Can I make the motion, since we're invited? Okay, I make a motion to approve the closing of City Hall offices on Thursday, December 20th, from 12:30 to 4:30.
And...
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion regarding it?
Police will still be working, though. Thank you.
I need to confirm that.
Yes, we just need a confirmation on that.
If there is no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. And thank you for inviting us, so now you can be at the potluck with everybody else. I appreciate that. I'm going, if it's possible, I don't know if I should put it here underneath, but another public comment. Which one do you think, where should?
Oh, did I miss it?
Yeah, probably after, between 10 and 11, I would think, wasn't it?
Okay. So for 10.5, I'm gonna put a public comment right there. So if there's anyone that gives you another opportunity, if there's anything that you would like to talk about for a couple minutes, you may come to the microphone. You do not have to give your address, and just say what's on your mind. Hello.
Hello.
But do tell us if you're a resident, you know, we would like to know that.
I am and I am not, in sorts. My name is Mike Terrell. I'm an elder at Community Fellowship SDA Church, right down here on the corner, the only structural church in the city at this point in time. And I, and my pastor, came to the city-county meeting wanting to make ourselves familiar with all of you great people and let you know of some of the programs that we're offering, trying to offer and develop at our church, and express our strong desire to work with the city in any way that we can, using our building and properties and our humble, meager resources, because we are a small congregation, but to have the desire to step out and become a part, vital part of the community. So with that said, one thing that I wanted to make the City Council aware of is we are tenaciously working to open... tenaciously working to open a, a commercial kitchen within our church so we can assist and we're targeting, we're trying to target veterans in this area or anyone that'd like to come in and use our veterans, uh, use our facilities for meetings and for food, feed them. We have a gentleman who is a chef that said he'd be willing to come in and prepare meals to work with us and, but we are, we are right at the tail end of this process. We've put about thirty grand into our kitchen so far so we can get it licensed by the health department, whatnot, so we don't, um, run into problems there. And we have other things that we're hoping to be able to initiate within our, our church structure to make it a twenty-four-seven facility for the community, uh, such as outreach and different, we have a community service program. Right now, we're just talking about, we have tons of clothes, shoes and hats and things, baby strollers and you name it, in our basement, in our community service area whereby if someone is in need of clothing, we just can bring them down, say, take what you need. We've been able to service several, um, facilities that in distress after fires and that, that just pickup trucks loaded with clothing. And we just, um, we just want to make the city that aware of the fact that our little church over here, which we're in a process of renovating, we purchase it, are purchasing it from community congregational. Um, their, their congregation had dwindled to the point where they couldn't financially maintain the building. And so they're still worshiping in, in the center. As a matter of fact, actually, we have five churches that are sharing the building.
Right.
Uh, that rent from us on Sunday. We, being Seventh-day Adventists, are there on Saturday. And, uh, so we're here again, trying to reach out and accommodate and assist our brothers and sisters in different faiths to work together instead of against each other.
Right.
Um, but that is our goal. But, um, anyone that has ideas or, or the desire to support us and what we're trying to do, because here again, that's the reason for the name, Community Fellowship. Uh, we want to reach out and service. I, I've set, I sit on the, um, well, um, the design committee, um, with Bruce and a few others when we get that kind of rolling again, uh, which is an eye-opener for me in terms of things that the city is attempting to do and I try to keep my ear to the ground so if I see some way we can step in and assist, um, and, and take advantage of like the, the grant situations and things, we're constantly trying to develop the building to make it more functional. So, I think I probably said enough.
No, it's all right, just two questions. So it sounds like you have synergy with Oakland County Shelter when it comes to, um, collecting clothing and items and you can distribute. So have you thought about partnering with them?
I've had two meetings. Uh, the gentleman who, uh, I have his card, but I can't remember his name, we're trying to set up a time for him to come to our church. Every year we take, actually, we're doing it right now, we take food baskets, we get laundry baskets, fill them with food, uh, put in a, a gift card so they can buy their own turkeys, but I'm literally a laundry basket full of food and we take it to people. Uh, usually we pass out forty, sometimes as many fifty, um, and that's about how many members we have in our church right now, fifty or sixty. But the effort is to work with them. One thing we have talked about is having them come and use our church facility to sleep. The only thing that has prevented at this point, we thought it might be best to make our building more secure, we're looking to put in cameras and this type of thing. So if any incident did arise, uh, we can say, okay, we have this on tape and, but that's another reason for the kitchen outreach. So, because they would be sleeping in the basement area and remember from our church as well as the SOS staff would, would be there, um, but we're just trying to make the building more secure because we need to do that anyway in this day and age. And then we're hoping to move forward with that.
Okay, so, yeah, so from a, a ordinance perspective, we may have to talk to the city attorney about the, the accommodations of sleeping and I, I'm sure you guys would probably be within board. But the second question or second observation that I had for you was, um, so have you reached out to Emmanuel House? Because they are serving, um, a Thanksgiving dinner on Wednesday and I'm going to be there, uh, serving veterans and it's all veteran Thanksgiving Day dinner. And that's in Redford, so.
Okay, okay, not aware of that, so thank you.
So if you're interested, I can, um, I'll, I'll leave you my number and then maybe we can get together.
Okay, that'd be great, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hopefully the design committee will start back up again once we get our new, um, economic developer.
That'd be great. I, I love that because I'm a retired teacher from Southfield Public Schools. I taught architecture and I was, that's the only reason I was asked to be on the committee. With a little bit I do have to share, you know, input. Uh, so, um, been a good experience, just the fellowship, interacting, rubbing elbows with important people, you know, all right?
Have you, have you reached out to Vista Marie? I just talked to them today and they were, they were talking about the infants that they have.
Yes.
Because you mentioned having, um, carriages and baby carriages and things.
We have, we have a daycare. The functions in, on the second floor of our church.
Okay, yes.
A Village Early Learning Center, it's run by Rosita Gabriel.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, if there's something we can do to-
I will, I will let you, yeah, I will let you know. I'll give you my information as well.
See, that's why I'm up here talking, trying to gather.
Yeah.
So we can network and make things happen, all right?
Appreciate you coming though.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay.
I think I introduced myself earlier.
Oh, not on camera though.
Yeah, no.
Sorry.
Need an address?
No, you don't, name, yes, no address.
Martin Summer, Hyatt Labs, um, three five three five four Naples Court. Um, I live in Farmington Hills, um, hoping for cannabis to come through in Lathrop Village. I do work with, um, several, um, outreaches and, um, I know you said you were going to be in Redford?
Yeah.
On Wednesday. Um, I can leave you my information. I buy approximately seven hundred turkeys every Thanksgiving week and we, um, I work with the Blessed Monastery Sacrament and, um, I buy them for the church and then we disperse to different outreaches. So if there's any help that we can provide, I'll be more than happy to. Also, I'll be reaching out, I forget your name, but?
Mike Terrell.
Mike, Martin, nice to meet you. Um, maybe we can, I, um, I'm in different retail businesses and you mentioned cameras. I have a good friend of mine that's in the camera business, so maybe we might be able to help you.
Awesome.
Awesome. So, um, again, um, yeah, my wife works in the city of Lathrop and, uh, we do work for you guys currently, um, and hopefully we continue it, so, thank you.
Thank you, really appreciate it, thanks.
City administrator?
Thank you. We have a lot of things going on. Uh, one of the updates I want to share with you is the water main lining project that's going on. They discovered near Rainbow and Lincoln, a section that actually has a forty-degree angle in it, so it does not make sense to actually do the lining for that portion of it. Um, so they will essentially do a bypass and tie the line back to the main existing water main line. The section north, which is Rainbow to Margate, will still be lined, so we just wanted to advise you of that. The planning commission's next meeting is November twenty-seventh. We had anticipated that the, um, the Lathrop BP petrol gas station would be on the agenda. They haven't submitted all the materials yet, so I've advised them as of today that we're probably looking at the December eighteenth meeting of the planning commission for that. They also have a matter that should be coming before the zoning board of appeals, so that will need to be scheduled as well. The DDA had a meeting scheduled for November ninth. Unfortunately, um, we weren't able to have a quorum present, so they did not hold their meeting. We do have the facade grants and the sign grant applications are available and they're online for anyone who would like to obtain it, want to, or at least apply for one of those grants. The RFQ for the Real Estate Professional has, has been issued and the deadline for the response is December seventh and that, um, material is also available on our website. The two positions that were posted for the Community and Economic Development Manager as well as the Assistant Building Department and Code Inspector position has been closed. We received over fifty applications, so we're going through the process of vetting, um, those applicants. Hope to have someone in place by the end of the year. The service line warranty program, if you recall, they came and made the presentation for this water and the sewer line coverage, insurance coverage, and we want the residents to know this is a legitimate company and they are, um, supported and partner with the city of Lathrop Village as well as the National League of Cities. And they just did their second mailing for those who might be interested in participating in that, um, that program. And anyone who's ever had to replace a water or sewer line knows that can be very costly. So it's definitely worth a while to take a look at that. And I'm glad he's not here today because we're planning a tribute for council member Frank Brock on December seventeenth, so that'll be just before your regular council meeting from five-thirty to six-thirty PM. So on that date, your council meeting will actually be in the community room as well as the celebration. So that's at five-thirty. The community is welcome to attend, um, Commissioner Quarles, and I just sent you an email today, I'm advising you of that. And, uh, thank you again for the, um, allowing for the potluck celebration and I, and several of you have heard of your specialty dishes and I look forward to sampling those on that occasion. And Thanksgiving holiday, the city hall administrative offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday. And everyone has been waiting to hear when is the, um, Santa coming to town, so it's scheduled for Sunday, December second. Santa and the reindeer will be here from one to three and there'll be activities going on through five o'clock PM, which is approximately getting towards dusk and we'll have the actual tree lining ceremony, so that's on Sunday, December second. And, uh, thank you again, Commissioner Quarles, for the Small Business Saturday, that's Saturday, um, November twenty-fourth. And if you go to, um, the website, advantage oakland dot com forward slash shop small, you can register and get some types of prizes, so we encourage everyone to shop locally. The Southfield Chamber was present at our study session and they are partnering with us for an event on January ninth at nine a.m. here in the community room with a presenter, Michael Jeffries, who will be addressing advanced communications and sales strategies. It's open to everyone. The cost for attendance is five dollars for members and ten dollars for non-members. And I just want to remind you that I do have some time planned off in the coming weeks and that's noted in the report.
I had a question for you, and then I should ask Tanya when she was here for the Southfield Chamber event, the cost is five dollars for members, so that extends to all the residents if they wanted to go, it's five dollars, right?
Of Lathrop?
Mm-hmm.
What, I can confirm that with her because I thought she said it was just certain companies that were actually members of the chamber.
I would guess it would be people who are officially associated with the city, would be my guess.
Well, my question is, because the city is a member of the chamber, if a resident wants to come, do they pay five dollars or do they pay ten dollars?
Yeah, it's, do they get to ride on our?
Yeah, coattails.
I will confirm it. I would assume that it would be the ten dollars because as an entity, if they were associ-, if, and if you wanted to attend, it would be the five dollars.
Right.
But a resident, I would have to confirm.
But it was our residents' money that paid for that, uh?
I got you.
Thank you. So, I think it is five dollars for the residents. So, thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
Um, city attorney?
Nothing for me.
I knew you were gonna say that.
You can just strike that one right from the beginning.
Oh, no, one day you'll surprise us and say something. Um, any reports from boards, commissions, committees?
Nothing from the planning commission.
Nothing?
We didn't have a vet.
What? Any unfinished, any new business, any comments from the council?
Yeah, I'd like to thank a vet for the, her election work. Um, we had a phenomenal turnout, uh, here, twenty-seven hundred votes were cast, so I, I think that was what, seventy-eight percent or something like that is what I saw.
Seventy-four percent.
Seventy-four, which is amazing.
Yes.
And thanks to the residents for coming out and voting. Um, and that, and her team did a fantastic job, so I just wanted to thank her.
And I was here early and it was the longest line and it moved so quickly. It was, the atmosphere was pleasant and, um, you really did, you know, you did raise the bar, we thank you for that.
Again.
Great, great turnout.
Teamwork, I have some really-
Great team.
Really great teams.
Yeah, good teamwork, good training because of our clerk and we were one of the top communities in terms of voter turnout, so despite that onslaught of public participation in the electoral process, um, she was on top of it and it was, it was a good day. And, um, I join you in applauding her efforts.
Thank you. Very good.
Um, and thank you too for everyone that came out for the town hall, uh, the proposal that we did with, uh, the senator. Very good discussion and it's always good for community to get together and to talk about issues and so thank you for all that came, came out.
And, um, for logos, which is inside of your church, they're having a prayer breakfast here, um, December first at nine o'clock, so if you all come by. December first.
Yes, it is.
Saturday, December first.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Um, any other? My own clerk, do you want to say anything?
Uh, yes, I'd like to thank all of the voters who participated in the election process. Everyone was patient, the lines were long at one point, but it was steady all day. And I just can't thank those who work, the polls, the precinct workers, they, they are the best. I have a member of our absent voter counting board here in the audience and we had like a thousand absentee ballots to be counted and they were on top of everything. It's, it's just not me, my face is in the forefront, but I have a great team, a supportive team. And I thank you all here, city council.
Dr. Mitchell.
Everyone for assisting me because you all asked me if I needed any assistance with anything and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Hearing none?
Nope.
Let's go.